Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Morning.
Let's see where we're at. Item number four.
I'll make a motion to recess the commissioner's meeting and open the salary board meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item four, recess commissioner's meeting, open the salary board. All in favor?
Aye.
On the board, don't move. Okay. Item number three.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 23 salary board meeting.
I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item three, approve minutes of the March 23 meeting. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number four.
I'll make a motion to adjust the starting rate for the full-time union position victim-witness coordinator effective April 14, 2016, from 8:28 per hour to 11:48 per hour for the recommendation of Robert Klein as attorney.
I'll second that.
I'd like to see about meting that motion to state in there that the 11:48 will prevail over the union contract and over the arbitration.
Still amended?
Do you agree to that?
Yes.
By way of background, this position, I believe, was being paid at the rate of approximately $18 an hour, $19 an hour through a grant. We're reducing that. We are going to require a two-year degree in something similar to accounting, finance, something like that, because it is a very important position. It's very important to making sure that justice is served. But it also involves a grant that has specific reporting requirements, and we want to make sure that we have someone that adds skills and background in order to do that effectively so we can ensure the continuation of the grant as well as pursuing additional grant funds for victim services.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
It's okay. You're also thinking, sir.
Thank you.
Item number five.
Make a motion to eliminate the full-time union position, second deputy clerk of courts with an effective date of April 14, 2016.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Hall to eliminate the full-time union position, second deputy clerk of courts with an effective date of April 14, 2016. Questions or comments?
Who's the second deputy clerk of courts at this point?
I can't give you that name right now.
Can't?
Any other questions or comments? Yes.
What is the reasoning for eliminating the position?
Well, I think the reasoning is, is that with the change of the collections moving across the street and the requirement for that, and also compared to other counties, especially Tioga County that has the same population, the same number of judges, and the same things going on in the staff they have, that's why.
Wayne County has 11 employees. They're Class 6. They have two more employees more than I do.
Tioga County has two employees, two judges, same class, same number of citizens, and they have two.
And you're making a determination on that without discussing it with me?
Well, that's why we're here today.
Okay. It's needed. I've always had three bodies working in clerk of courts, and our workload has increased. It is necessary to maintain three bodies. We have people on vacations time, sick time, personal time. We have people in court covering offices, and I need bodies and manpower downstairs.
Okay. Any other comments?
I have some comments. Also, why would you compare Tioga County between Wayne County, and then you pick Tioga County when they're very similar and you just pick one that happens to fit your model? You can't pick Wayne County?
Well, we looked at several accounts. Any other questions?
Could I comment?
Yes.
I'd just like to comment that in the past, we have compared ourselves to Tioga County many, many times in the 12 years that I've been here previously because of population, because of geographic area, because of how many judges, things like that. So we're very, very comparable to what Tioga County has. And the other, I just want to comment again that we have taken a job out of there and created a job in probation, and that pass went through. So we've essentially taken a large part of the workload from that position and moved it.
No, you didn't. And we had three bodies there working the position prior to Judge Siemens giving us collections to take. And we did it without adding bodies.
Is that what we were told?
Well, that's not exactly what we were told, no.
Who told you?
We were told that, but here's the thing. We've also
Who told you?
We've also, don't interrupt me. We've also told you that we've given you over $300,000 to electronically upgrade your offices, do all your stuff in your offices to try and streamline your offices. We've gone as far as taking and putting new technology in there for you, new computers, to make things more efficient for you. And the collections were way down last year, and, you know, we have to look at, start looking at areas that we need to start reducing numbers.
What was collections last year?
I have those figures right in front of me right now.
$600,000. Over 600 I brought in.
Right. And then we also had several, probably 200, 300 warrants that were never issued and other collections that weren't done.
And we had warrants that were issued, and we have not been gone out and arrested the people who brought them in to make the collections.
Well, you're the one that told me you weren't issuing warrants because we didn't have a judge, and you weren't going to issue the warrants.
We were directed by the court.
Well, the court, court didn't agree with that. That's not what the court told us.
Well, that's what I was told.
Any other questions or comments?
May I ask another question then? If you're comparing yourself to Tioga County, what is the staffing in the commissioner's office and what is their budget for non-supervisors' wages?
I'd have to look at it and see. But you'd also look at the assessment office. We had 11 people in it a year ago, and now at the end of this month, we'll be down to seven people. So we're also making cuts in other offices.
Well, looking at the non-supervisors' budget line item in 2012 for the commissioners, it was $87,015. In 2016, or no, I'm sorry, for the commissioners was $33,237. And for 2016, it was budget $157,864.79.
And what was that for?
That's for the commissioner's office, and it was non-supervisors' wages. So now your office is the only one that increases workload?
No, in our total group, we're still negative on numbers for what we've lost in other departments like assessment and other areas and the areas we've picked up.
Well, this is an assessment's budget.
Well, what I'm telling you, and if you'll let me finish again before you interrupt me, is that one of the individuals we had here, we transferred up to historical records, which now falls back under the commissioner's office. We no longer charge the other departments for that. So we assume that expense also because nobody wanted to go up there and take care of the records when people were out sick. So now we have that person under our payroll and had to replace the operator that was doing that because nobody will go up and sit up there out of any of the other departments when somebody's out. So now we have to have a person here go up there and do that also.
Part of the person who was up there before a portion of their salary came out of the commissioner's office?
Yes, it did. And half of it came out of someplace else. And everybody was supposed to send people up there to take care of that department when people were out. But people refused, like your department refused to do that. Any other questions or comments?
It'll occur when we're short on man, power.
I'd like to know, why are you making all these cutbacks? Are you short on money?
Well, well, as the fiduciary responsibility of the commissioners is to make sure we're not throwing money away. And if we can operate with less money, then we should be operating with less money. It's the taxpayers' money.
So it's not because you have less money, you're not
Well, of course, we have less money. We have less money coming in on collections. We have less money coming in because the gas company's no longer here paying for searches and deeds and everything else. So there's a lot less money coming in. So we either take and look at things and start saying, how do we start controlling our costs and start looking at trying to bring some of them under control, or we're going to have a big black hole like the state does at the end of the year.
My office also brings in money for the county.
Absolutely. A lot of offices bring in money for the county, too. And that's the job of the offices, to do that. Any other comments?
Sandy has it.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's elevating.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Now, I have a quick question.
Mm-hmm.
Is there an option to suspend the position? In other words, just to see, give it a year to see how?
Well, listen, you can eliminate this position. There's nothing to say that we can't. If things change in three months or four months, there's nothing to say we can't recreate the position and bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Position eliminated. Item number six.
I'll make a motion to eliminate the full-time union position of second deputy registrar with an effective date of April 14, 2016.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item eight, full-time union position, second deputy registrar recorder with an effective date of April 14, 2016. Questions or comments? Yes.
Again, the reasoning behind eliminating it?
Right now, the reason behind it is the position hasn't been filled for four months. And when I asked you a month and a half ago, you told me that you weren't busy and that you don't need it. And the collections in your department are half of what they were when the gas company was here.
That's not what I said.
That's exactly what you said.
I said, we're training one person, and everybody else's workload has shifted with new hires from last year. So you've got to get somebody in there with their feet underneath them with all the questions we get asked before you bring in somebody else. New, it was a matter of finding somebody with some experience that wasn't starting out with no knowledge whatsoever. We've already reduced salaries over $40,000 from last year to this year. We spend much less than we take in. It's as if we're being penalized now for it.
No, you're not being penalized. What we're looking at, again, is, you know, with the staff you had when the gas industry was here and doing all their searches and stuff, you know, you're now looking at, you're going to be one and a half persons less than what you were when those people were here.
We already eliminated our permanent part-time, which they were the ones helping with the gas. We still have court-ordered guardianship reports we have to do. I have nobody to do that.
Well, you've gone four months, and you've still got the work done in the four months.
I've been picking up the slack in the meantime. But we still need a body. You can't have three offices with three people, again, if somebody's out. There's, we'll have to shut the office, and people won't be able to come in at certain times, lunchtimes, whatever, because we won't have anybody there.
Well, you have more than enough people to stagger lunchtimes to be able to still operate your office.
Not if you have one person that happens to be on vacation, somebody gets sick. And we also have court. I have to be in court when I'm needed up there.
Any other comments?
I think most of you know where I am. I'm a solicitor for the registrar and recorder.
Mm-hmm.
And I think this is a bad timing for this move for a number of reasons. One, you have a new registrar and recorder, not someone who's been in the office for a number of years. Somebody who's worked in the office but never headed the office as the administrator of the office. She has a lot of new details she has to learn about how to run the office. It's a great difference from being the first deputy to being the actual registrar and recorder. She's learning that office as she goes along here. She's people she can contact. I'm in constant contact with her. When I come to the courthouse, I'm going, I'll spend half an hour to an hour at a time at no cost to the county. Is trying to help Michelle get along with the, I'm sorry, Rich, Ms. Estabrook, get along with the, learn some of the things she's doing. I'll get emails once or twice a day from her. Things that the previous registrar and recorder knew because she had been in the office for a continued period of time. That doesn't, Ms. Estabrook doesn't have that luxury. She's coming into a situation where she's got one brand-new employee, just came in when she came in, one vacant spot, one employee that I think has been there about a year and a half or less, and then the other employee's been there less than three years. She doesn't have a wealth of experience coming into that office. A lot of people are still learning the job. She's still having to teach people of the job that she had learned before that they have to learn now. As a result of that, she's out there doing work that normally the second deputy would have been doing or the first deputy would have been doing. People that are having to learn what they're doing, she's instructing them. She's falling behind in the work that she should be able to do. Administrative work, administrative challenges. You all know what it's like. You've been in office for some new, some, for a period of time, but think back when you started. What you knew back then is far different than what you know now. You know how to cut corners now to get things done because you've had experience for a while. Ms. Estabrook doesn't have that luxury. She needs to catch up. She has, your salaries, as she indicated, have cut substantially because you're talking entry-level positions as opposed to experienced people. You know, a lady of the left that had been here, what, 30-some years, 40 years? And not to mention the number of years the registrar and recorder had. As she just said, when people go on vacation, they're not necessarily cross-trained between the registrar and wills and orphans court. The jobs are substantially different. When people come into the office, and I speak as an attorney who's practiced here for 41 years, you walk in, you want to get things done. You also depend, in some ways, at least if you're smart about it, the registrar and wills people will know what they're doing, and they can point out to you about the fact that you missed something here or you need this here. It's a great help for a young lawyer. I remember when I started back in the '70s, if it wasn't for people like Francis Baker, Ross Street, Pathologist Office, and Mr. Witt in the registrar and wills office, I'm sure there would have been mistakes made. They caught and said, here's what you need to get done, by the way. Don't miss this. You need those experienced people. We don't have those experienced people in the registrar and wills office now. We need to train them. That position is needed for that alone. Not to mention the fact, you're coming in there a lot of times to file something. You can't afford to sit there none the time to try and explain to people in the office what's going on because you've got to drag cash to court a lot of times. You need those people. You can't be standing and waiting nine, five or 10 minutes as you do in some other offices in the county. You need to be able to get this done and get it done promptly. There isn't the manpower right now. Somebody, Michelle's up in court, Ms. Estabrook, I'm sorry, I keep getting too familiar here. If Ms. Estabrook is up in court, somebody's got to be answering her for the job, which they can run that. If somebody's on vacation, if somebody's sick, it's not unusual that two people are on vacation. You can only stay on vacation so much. It's not unusual for the registrar to be off at a meeting someplace. Somebody else has to do the job. If you're MTC, you're down to three people then. If she's gone. If someone's on vacation, you're down to two people. Those two people will not be able to effectively run that office. People are looking for a prompt response. I came in yesterday, just by chance. Some person was there. They had a strange thing going on that came up. Ms. Estabrook didn't have the answer to it. Didn't have the years of training in there to know how to necessarily answer. She had a good idea. It was the correct one, but it was how to answer this people, this person. They wanted something right then. And as you all know, the public can get rather belittled sometime if you're not out there giving them a response. Not sort of response they want to hear, but a response that's based on sound reason and the law. If you don't have people, you can't do that. The, I'll sum this up really quickly here. You're serving the public. There's a marriage license, a perfect example, raised earlier. Somebody comes in for a marriage license. A lot of times, it's got to be done right away. They can't, you can't say to them, come back in an hour, come back in two hours. Some people come in and they can't wait though, the waiting period. They want to know how to go about, what judge do they go to? When can they get to a judge? You need people that know how to do that. Right now in that office, there is, I dare say, probably Ms. Estabrook and maybe one other person that knows how to do that. She's going to train somebody. That training is going to take time away from her position, what she's doing now and the job she needs to do, the job she was elected to do. What I'm looking at, and I'm requesting that you do, is table this for a period of time. Or stop it right now, maybe bring up a year from now, but give Ms. Estabrook a chance to learn the job and train the people. There's somebody, I understand, that's already put their papers in, is supposed to be starting on this job in about a month from now, moving from another, another office. So it's a collateral transfer. But give her the manpower, the person power, to be able to do her job and see if, a year from now, she's been able to train those people and say, I've got people who can do this. I can work with you and eliminate a position, as opposed to say, we're going to eliminate your position now. You find a way to make it work. It's a lot easier to work with people and try and do something together. So what I'm requesting you do is withdraw the motion for now and work with Ms. Estabrook. And I think, you're smart people. I mean, you didn't get elected because you're foolish and unintelligent. So there's four heads at that table with Ms. Estabrook and myself. Let's sit down and see what we can put together in a way of conversation, see if this person is really needed. Give her a chance to see, in her mind, if it's really a good idea, and give you a chance to see whether or not you really need to eliminate it. Let's keep the position for now, and let's let it, see what we can do by going, acting together.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. I'll respond to that. Simply saying this is, in your own idea, that these people are new that are in there. So as they're in there for a period of time, they've, someone's been there for four months now. As they continue throughout this year, they'll become more efficient in their jobs, which means they'll be able to produce even higher numbers out than they're doing right now because of the efficiency from being there longer. As I said before, if we haven't had this person there for four months, the office is still functioning and things are still getting done. And as far as, you know, down the road, there's always that possibility down the road that if this position does get eliminated, that in six months, if we have a problem, we can always put the position back in. Or we can look at putting a temporary position in if we run into issues with the vacations and issues like that. So just because a decision's made today doesn't mean it's cut and stone and will last forever. We can always make the change down the road.
Respond to that. A temporary position would not work because therefore you're starting back at square one. But nobody that knows anything about the job wouldn't help at all. Secondly, Mary Noldy from Assessment and I have been trying to get a meeting. We have an idea to bring in more revenue to the county, but we haven't been able to get a meeting, everybody together to discuss it. But I would need a person in the office to be able to help with this additional person.
Well, and I would say at that point, if you have the meeting with Mary and you've got a proposal to bring to the commissioners as to take and generating additional revenue through some other mechanism or resource that you're using, then we would be open to sit down and discuss it to see about putting an additional person in if that's what the requirements are and if it's cost-effective. But also, at the same time, we will not have a meeting with all of us sitting down to discuss whether we're going to hire somebody or not, sign somebody. That violates the sunshine law. That's why we're here today.
It wasn't about that. It's about the proposal to generate more income because it's between Assessment and our office.
Well, I understand what your point was, and that's, and for your point, you know, I agree. Well, if you've got a proposal, then we'll be glad to sit down and listen to your proposal. But Frank's comment was that we all need to sit down and talk about this position and whether we should have a position or not, and that would violate the sunshine law. We can't do that.
Mr. Hall, you said that the office is functioning. A beat-up car that can go 20 miles an hour is functioning, okay? An office that is working at less than full capacity because it lacks the power and the manpower to work in is also functioning. But is it functioning to the degree that it needs to be functioning under the law? Function to the degree to be able to assist the public, to do the work for the public? You've got a new employee of four months. We don't know how long, but how that employee's necessarily going to work out. We don't know if that employee's going to stay necessarily. I don't know what your probationary period here is, but it's a relatively
Well, four months are past that, so I would hope that the elected official at that point would have made a determination on that.
You're looking at, as I said earlier, Ms. Estabrook is doing a lot of the work that normally is done by that, the person whose job you want to win and by the person that's a new hire. As a result of that, her own work is falling behind. Can she work 60, 70 hours a week to try and get caught up and help things out? Any of us can. Is that her obligation? No. The obligation is to make sure the office is properly staffed so the public is served. Right now, it's not. It's not because, it's not staffed to the extent that we need it to be staffed. It's not staffed to the extent that we don't have the experienced people in there. We have a lot of people learning their jobs. They need to, we need to have the people in there that can learn and progress. Once they learn, they can do a little better. But we're falling behind every day because manpower is not there and because the experience is not there and the knowledge isn't there. Give her the time to get that knowledge. Give her the time to get the experienced people in there. That's what we're looking for. Then we can discuss this a lot more intelligently about it rather than just saying, we're eliminating a position. Right now, there's a need for that position. There's a need for that position monetarily. There's a need for that position for the sake of the service to the public. There's a need for that position, the right that Ms. Estabrook has selected official to be able to properly staff her office. And the obligation, I contend, that Jewish commissioners have to the public and to her to staff her office to the extent that it's needed to be able to do the job right. If you take the position away, it's not going to be.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
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 Position is placed. Item number seven.
I'll make a motion to eliminate the full-time non-union position of first deputy tax claim director with an effective date of April 14.
Second.
Motion by Treasurer Miller, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item seven, eliminate the full-time non-union position of first deputy tax claim director. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number eight.
I'll also make a motion to create the full-time non-union position of first deputy tax claim director slash office manager with an effective date of April 14, 2016, and set the salary at $32,000 per year, six-month probationary period with benefits according to government mandated requirements.
Second.
Motion by Treasurer Miller, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item eight, create the full-time non-union position of first deputy tax claim office manager. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any public comment on the salary board? Item ninety.
I'll make a motion to close the salary board. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, second, or motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to close the salary board and return the commissioner's meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number six.
I make a motion to approve item number six.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item six on the agenda, approve minutes of March 23. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number seven. It's listed on the agenda. I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item seven on the agenda to approve the electronic payments and cash disbursements. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item eight.
Make a motion to ratify or approve the seminar requests that are listed on your agenda. I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item eight on the agenda to ratify or approve the seminar request for payments. Questions or comments? Yes.
This is number eight, Brett?
Yes.
Can you explain more of what the basic firearms training might be that Nicholas Kneigleon was getting involved in?
It's training that all probation officers go through to make sure that, it's just an awareness and training as far as, you know, deals with the use of the firearms, when to use the firearms, how to use the firearms.
Are they trying to increase sensitivity because of all the reports we've had lately with police overreacting?
I'm sure that, you know, there might be something in that seminar that includes that. I'm sure that there's a big awareness now of making sure that, you know, that this is the last resort. This isn't the first resort. And a lot of it deals with, you know, safety to themselves. I'm sure they don't, you know, hurt themselves. They're going in themselves, too.
Now, is the saying, when you say it's not the last resort, it shouldn't be the first resort, it should be the last resort. Is that the same now, type of training they're doing for the state police?
I couldn't tell you what the state police training is.
Because they seem to be doing that, you know, based on records, as if that's the first resort instead of the last.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number nine. It's listed on the agenda.
Make a motion to approve item number nine. It's listed on the agenda. I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item nine, to ratify and accept the regret of the resignation of John Russo from the jail for the recommendation of Mark Shaw. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Done.
Make a motion to approve item number ten. It's listed on the agenda. I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item ten, to accept the regret of the resignation of Levi Tiffany from the sheriff's office for the recommendation of Sheriff Lance Spandick. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item eleven.
Make a motion to approve item number eleven. It's listed on our agenda. I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item eleven on the agenda, to ratifying now the hiring of Joshua Dick of Nicholson to the open temporary full-time position of deputy sheriff. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number twelve. It's listed on the agenda. I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item twelve on the agenda, to ratifying now the transfer of Joshua Dick from Nicholson from the open temporary full-time position of deputy sheriff to the open full-time position of deputy sheriff. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number thirteen. It's listed on our agenda. I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item thirteen on the agenda, to ratifying now the appointment of Michael Horn of Matros to the Suscano County Task Force, effective April 1st, for Robert Klein. Questions or comments? Yes, please.
What is the Suscano County, Suscano County Task Force, sir?
It's the Drug and Alcohol Task Force.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen.
I make a motion to approve item number fourteen. It's listed on the agenda. I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item fourteen on the agenda, to allow the transfer of Lana Travis from the second deputy tax claim to the full-time, non-union position of First Deputy Tax Claim, $32,000 a year, $40 per week, with Jason Miller. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen.
Make a motion to approve item number fifteen. It's listed on our agenda. I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item fifteen, to establish for 2016 only, using Act 13 funding, $5,000 grant for the volunteer fire and ambulance service, which provides assigned coverage for Suscano County from adjacent counties and an additional separate $5,000 grant utilized in Act 13 funding for Barnes' case on advanced life support in Montrose, Minn. Only be used for equipment and training. Questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
This is really a raised hand.
Yes.
The, the first part of that, the $5,000 grant for volunteer fire and ambulance, is that first come, first served?
No.
Everybody's got to get a piece of the pie?
It's for all the ones that service our county.
So everybody gets a piece of the pie?
Yes. So there's, there's, out of Y listing, there's one, there's like three, three or four, I think, that are outside. I don't have the list in front of me right now.
Okay. And then the second part is for those two specific?
That are inside the county that kind of don't fall totally under the volunteer services. You know, they do have, get some reimbursements.
Okay. They'll be divvying up that?
What's that?
So they'll be splitting that $5,000 each?
No, each, each person will get the $5,000.
Okay. Oh, okay. So that's each?
Each.
That's a lot of money. Might want to add that.
Each.
I see that.
Yes, all.
That would include all fire companies?
All the, all the other, the fire companies and the ambulance companies that are Suscano County-based have already gotten a $10,000.
I know we got some, but I forgot.
Yeah, that was at the last meeting. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Austin.
Make a motion to approve item number sixteen. It's listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item sixteen on the agenda, to exonerate the tax claim, borough from collecting joint taxes, under following, per the recommendation of Jason Miller. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item seventeen.
Make a motion to approve item number seventeen. It's listed on our agenda. I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to assign and accept a $55,000 local law enforcement grant for use of the Suscano County District Attorney's Office. Grant funds are from the local law enforcement grant program from Commonwealth of PA. Questions or comments?
I'd just like...
Stacy.
Just to be, just to be clear, that is, that's task force funding, right?
Uh, that'll be money that'll go, that can be used in the district attorney's department. It can be partially used for a task force.
And I believe that $9,000 of it is going toward First Assistant District Attorney...
Right.
Bill Urbanski's salary.
Right. Any other questions?
Has this been given before this grant?
We have, this is the first time we've received this grant.
First time.
The district attorney's office, District Attorney Klein wrote the grant and he got the funding. All in favor?
Aye.
Any may?
Make a motion to approve item number eighteen. It's listed on our agenda. I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item eighteen on the agenda, to sign the electronic government payment services agreement between Suscano County and Merchant Multi-Service LLC for March 31st, 2016, for electronic payments with no cost to the county. It allows people that owe restitution or owe fines and stuff, they can electronically pay. They don't have to do it in person. Provided additional services. Maybe they'll pay then.
Good luck with that.
Good to be true.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item nineteen.
So make a motion to approve, approve item number nineteen. It's listed on our agenda. I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to ratify the collective bargaining agreement between County of Suscano and Teamsters Local 229, covering professional employees in the Office of Children and Youth from January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2019. Questions or comments? Yeah, took them a while to finally get the paperwork due. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 20. It's listed on the agenda. I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 20 on the agenda, to sign the children accounting and profile system version 11, 11B, 12 upgrades, agreement between Suscano County Services for Children and Youth and Advanco International Incorporated. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
That's all the software to take and track everything. Item 21.
I make a motion to approve item 21 on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve item 21, to appoint Jane Osborne of Springville to the Suscano County Tick-Borne Diseases Task Force. Questions or comments?
Any conclusions yet from the task force about the...
They just had, and I don't, maybe you didn't attend, but they just had a big thing at the Matros High School. When was that? A week ago?
Two Saturdays ago.
Two Saturdays ago. So, you know, they're getting stuff out to the public and doing things.
Any, any good conclusions? I mean, what's causing all the ticks or what can, why is this happening to us and compared to...
When's your next program going to begin there yet?
We don't know yet. We're not doing a study on why. We're just trying to get awareness and prevention, you know, to educate people, to prevent them, you know, take care of themselves, you know, use sprays, you know, proper clothing, identify a rash, get yourself to the doctor.
Just prevention, basically?
Prevention and awareness. Education is what we're focusing on.
Ms. Gadd, question?
Yeah, I just want to solidify, there is no county money going to this, correct?
Yeah, we're using a little bit. Not much, though. I think we used probably about less than $1,500.
And in what way is that spent? I understand these people are volunteers.
Well, they're volunteers. What it pays for the stationery and we had some speakers that we brought in and stuff, some doctors we brought in and put up for the night so they could speak and educate people.
Do we know how many people attended these, this meeting?
There's about 125 people at the event, yes.
Yeah.
And the speaker did not charge us. We put him up in the bed and breakfast and bought his dinner for $15. He did not charge us. He came. And he's one of the top doctors in the country on line disease. It was a very good program. And Jane Osborne is the state health nurse here in the county.
And when is your next meeting and how do we know about the meetings?
Well, the task force meetings are, it's just the task force people, and that is on April 20th.
But that's not open to the public, or is it?
No, it's just the task force.
And then when is your next event? Do you have another event?
We don't have an event planned at this time because there's a huge event going on on May 7th up in the Southern Tier at SUNY University. There's going to be about six doctors there. And that is put on by the Southern Tier Line Support Group. So, not to interfere with those folks. We're not doing anything for May. We are having something for our employees, though. We're going to have the nurse come in and speak to our employees, just, our employees that go out in the field, like probation, our deputy sheriffs, people that are out in the grass.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Make a motion to appoint Nancy Hurley of Susquehanna to the open position on Planning Commission with the term beginning immediately through December 31st, 2017. I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 22, to appoint Nancy Hurley to the open position of Suscano County Planning Commission. Questions or comments? Yes.
Who is she replacing? If it's an open...
Mr. Janiselli.
Mr. Janiselli?
Yeah, he resigned. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 23.
Make a motion to approve item number 23. This resolution is the designation of an agent for update to the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Could we also add Paul Johnson's name to that, please? I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to adopt Resolution 2016-05, designation of Agent Paul Johnson for update to the County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Questions or comments?
Any cost to the county?
Is there any?
No, there's, there's no cost to the county. This is designating me to act as an agent for a grant we're seeking to obtain through the state to hire a contractor to complete this plan update. Designating an individual as an agent that allows them to sign and process the paperwork that's due throughout the term of the grant, which is monthly reports to the state and quarterly reports to FEMA, because ultimately, it's FEMA money. So basically, authorizes me to complete all that paperwork on behalf of the county and submit it to those different agencies that need to be kept apprised of how we're using the money and where we are in the process of that project that the grant funds are being used for.
Do you have to attend any seminars?
I attended a seminar down in Monroe County a couple weeks ago, just a general training session on hazard mitigation, and it did talk about mitigation planning in that seminar.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment on the commissioners' meeting?
I'm going to go, I want to go back, neglected to ask this before, to number eight, the seminar request, requests.
Mm-hmm.
Can you explain what PA Clean is? Part of the page.
That's the Commonwealth Law Enforcement Network. It's, it just allows them to run the checks that they need to run in the 911 center. Allows them to run the background checks and things like that. Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any updates on the teachers strike? I haven't been able to get any info. Was it resolved? I mean, they were out for like two weeks.
It got nothing to do with the teachers.
But did you hear anything since you're county commissioner?
No, not a word.
What happened? Does anybody know, I guess, somewhere?
Yes.
I see you approved the bargaining agreement with children and youth.
Right.
And going back, you also hired somebody to a deputy sheriff position, starting at $11 per hour.
Right.
That's also, that contract's also being addressed.
There's two contracts. We're still waiting to get back from the arbitrator. One is for the sheriff's department, the other one is for the prison. And we haven't got those back yet. Once we get those back, then we'll, we'll ratify those.
And do you believe when maybe that comes back, that deputy sheriffs may be paid on par with perhaps corrections officers?
Well, I wouldn't estimate or to, to guess as to what the arbitrator's going to do, but that's a decision the arbitrator makes. That's what both parties agreed to.
So is it binding arbitration, then?
Yes.
Any time period expected?
I would hope within the next week or two. Of course, they've been telling me that for the last two months, the next week or two. So, but I think they're getting closer, so I do expect it. We should have it in the next week or two.
Thank you.
Any others? Yes.
I read an article recently in Rocket Courier. There was an interview with Cabot's PR person, George Stark, and their county commissioner, Doug McLeanco. And he mentioned that the rigs in Susquehanna County used, were four rigs in the county by Cabot.
Mm-hmm.
And now they're down to one.
Mm-hmm.
So that sounds like a 75% drop in development in our county. Would you say that's kind of accurate for the county at this point, that we have a 75% reduction in development?
I don't know the exact number. I do know that they're down to one rig, and I believe Southwestern's down to one rig now. So, you know, it's a huge reduction from, you know, before when they had four and Southwestern had two or three and, you know, there was a couple other players and they had a rig or two. So, yeah, it's substantial, very substantial.
And then I've talked to friends, you know, who have royalties and their royalty checks have gone down to one quarter of what they were. So that's a 75% drop also. And have you heard something like that too, overall in the county?
Well, the royalty checks are way down because of the price of gas is way down also. And that affects the royalty.
And also, the production supposedly, or what they're letting through, and they need more pipelines, from what I hear. So none, not much gas is coming out of the county.
Yeah, right. That would make sense. I, you know, I can't really comment on what capacity they're at in their wines, but, you know, that would make sense. If they can't get the gas out, then they would need more pipelines.
And I wanted to ask about Route 11. Any kind of a time period to repair that road because it's getting pretty bad?
It's on the, Route 11 is on the repair list for this year from probably about a mile or two miles south of, of the interchange of 706 to the 492 intersection on, on Route 11. That's, it's supposed to be done. I'm hoping that, depending on how the jobs are let out, that they'll get to that one hopefully early in the year, not late in the year. But I don't have a timeframe on it.
Don't have a timeframe, so you think...
Just that it's supposed to be done this year.
This year, so maybe before September, or...
Well, last year, they were going up until October, so let's hope before September.
And is the gas company at all helping with that road at this time, or is it just going to be the state?
My understanding, that's just state.
And I wanted to mention too, does anybody else want to talk?
Yes.
Go ahead.
As a matter of fact, I do. Do you guys have any information on the Keep America Beautiful and Keep Pennsylvania Beautiful grant money that can get you cameras that you can place in areas where garbage is being dumped, and then you can track these pesky creatures and get them arrested?
That one I'd have to do, but we're checking on, I'm busy working on the other two grants. The one is done, which was the TAP program. And there's another one right now going through DCNR for sewer systems, stormwater, and all of that. And that one, and I think that one expires after your grants, and I think by the beginning of June on that one. So that one, I'm trying to push out to everybody. I've gotten it out to, you know, part of a few people already that are looking for projects in the townships and municipalities.
Well, Evan, I have the information on how to, you, basically, I guess they'll give you money to get cameras that you can put on sites where dumping takes place, and they'll also train individuals to monitor those cameras for you. And I do have the name of an individual who would love to take on that position. So I can send that information to you guys by email if you want.
Yeah, send it up to the chief clerk's office so we can take a look at it. It might be something we can get soil conservation involved into.
Yep.
You know?
Okay.
Give them something to do.
All right, thank you.
Al.
Are they going to do anything with 706 from Lawton to Bradford County line?
Lawton to Bradford County line is back on the engineering board to try and figure out what they're going to do with that. I think at this point, what they're looking at doing, the concept now is just to do a little bit of the drainage work and then do a little base repair and skim it and then put a top coat on.
I feel maybe they put a top coat on.
Yeah, because the original plan was to go down and straighten the road, buy a bunch of houses, and do all kinds of things, but it ended up to be almost thirty million dollars to do that, and, you know, it's just not cost effective. So it was almost like the plan, if you don't, if you remember, there's also a plan, hopefully we've got it stopped at this point. There was a plan to take 706 from the bottom of, by Route 11, up to the top of the hill and make that three lanes coming up. And of course, the price to do that would be so astronomical, it would be crazy. You've got to move half the mountain to do it. And until they can take and get all the rest of the state roads repaired, you know, we said you need to stay away from that project and put the money in the rest of the infrastructure that needs to get fixed.
Thank you.
Wondering how, any updates on the water line to South Montrose, the J.O. Diaz business property, and are any homes being included in South Montrose from what I heard? And how many homes are included that have been contaminated by fengix?
Well, I don't know. You'd have to check with Pennsylvania American Water on that. As far as I know, the water line's only going to the jail and to the, to that site.
To what, Diaz?
To Diaz, and it goes out that road, and that's where it's going to. I mean, if Pennsylvania American Water wants to run it farther, that's, you know, their choice. They can do that. But right now, it's at the stage that they're just finishing up all the surveying, and they're supposed to be putting in for the permits from PNDOT in the next couple of weeks.
The site, Diaz, what's going to be on that site?
Basically, what's going to happen is, you know, the numbers I'm hearing is going to be between nine to twelve million dollar facility when it's done. It's basically going to, the problem he's running into with the site in town is he's out of space, and when you use an assembly line production, if you can't continue the line someplace, it becomes a problem. So they're looking at trying to move everything out of that facility down to the new facility and expand it so that they have the expansion capabilities to do what they need to do to increase their output and increase the sales that they have. And then the old site, they're looking at refurbishing that and doing some other things with that.
I wanted to also make an announcement. Tonight is Robert Klein, our DA, is going to have a drug abuse discussion in conjunction with Farm Bureau, right, Farm Bureau? Seven o'clock at the high school.
Six o'clock.
Oh, is it six?
Yeah.
Okay, I wrote that down.
There was a little confusion over that, but six o'clock.
It's six o'clock, so just to let everybody know and invite people, it should be something worthwhile with the whole drug issue, and we'll see what they come up with. That's for tonight. And then, Evan, if you know any updates on the Constitution pipeline, what they're going to do?
Nothing there.
Nothing new?
All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn from the commissioners and go to the retirement board.
Do I just say something?
We don't want to hear it.
Hey, thank you. Thank you for your comment. I just want to say that this week is National Volunteer Week, and in order for things to work in the county, we have boards, advisory boards, commissions that help us, you know, accomplish what happens in the county, and they're all volunteers, and there's volunteers all over the county, you know, fire departments, EMS. So I want to say thank you. Everybody wants to say thank you.
Can I get a motion to?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold to close the commissioners' meeting and open the retirement board. All favor?
Aye.
Okay, retirement board is open at 9:53. All present. Mr. Wilson here to present some findings and some recommendations. Mr. Wilson.
Good morning. Thank you very much. I figured I'd run through an overview of the plan, answer any questions that they have, and then as Fisher Hall just said, go through a specific recommendation. So as you take a look at page two, the retirement plan's assets as of March 31st were approximately twenty-three point two million in assets. As you look at the right-hand side, when Brinkworth first engaged back in October of 2012, the asset size was approximately twelve point two million in assets. And you can see from a combination of contributions made to the plan, as well as market appreciation, again, we're at approximately twenty-three point two million in assets. As we jump to page three, gives you an idea of the portfolio structure relative to the long-term targets of the plan. Big picture, in the, on the equity side, we're approximately forty-eight point four percent of the assets in equities, which is very similar to the target, forty-eight. Within there, we're slightly overweight to domestic equity and underweight towards international. That's been intentional, with a more favorable outlook towards domestic equities. Within fixed income, you can see that we're overweight, approximately twenty-eight point three percent relative to the long-term target of twenty-five. Within there, we have very little exposure to international bonds. We've been concerned about that part of the market, particularly emerging market debt. And therefore, by definition, we're overweight towards domestic bonds. And then lastly, in the area of alternatives, and this will relate to the recommendation then, the target is twenty-five percent. We're slightly underweight at twenty-three point three percent. On page four, it outlines then the retirement assets in relation to equities, fixed income, and alternatives. And the next several pages then will run through the details of how those assets are allocated within equity, fixed income, and alternatives. I would like to jump to page seven. And this is the alternative section. Again, this is approximately twenty-three percent of the plan assets, and it's divided between three main investments: real assets, Crystal Strategy 1, which is an absolute return investment, and Crystal Diversified Income. I'd like to focus on Crystal Strategy 1, which is then detailed on pages eight and nine. Crystal Strategy 1 is approximately six, not sixty, six percent of the plan assets. It's meant to generate an absolute return over time. The way that attempts to accomplish that is it owns various mutual funds, ETFs, and individual stocks. And it tends to be a little bit tactical in nature, meaning it will make some short-term moves in the market based on the manager's, manager's outlook. When we first used it in the plan, it was basically doing the job that we hired it to do. As of late, it has been performing as well as we would like, and the recommendation is to move that six percent to a different absolute return strategy. This other strategy will utilize mutual funds and ETFs. It will not utilize individual stocks in attempting to generate an absolute return, be a little less tactical, a little bit more strategic in nature in how it, in how it invests. On page nine, we sort of outlined, you know, what, you know, the basis of the recommendation, which is, one, we feel that across the board, as far as the whole plan goes, it's going to give us better diversification. Two, we think that it's a more diversified strategy than what we currently have in this space. And then lastly, we think that it's going to actually lower the overall risk to the total plan as well. So that's the basis behind the recommendations.
I'll make a motion to approve those recommendations.
I'll second you.
We have a motion by Christian Hall, signed by Christian Warren to approve the recommendation changes from Brinkworth Capital. Any other questions or comments? Yes.
I'd like to know, what kind of return do you get in your investments? Do you have an overall number of what kind of return you're getting for this whole fund or whatever you manage?
The plan.
Yeah, the plan.
So, of course, it's going to vary from, from year to year. For the last, since inception?
Well, just this past year, what's your return at this point, past year, let's say?
Well, for 2015, the plan return was actually negative a little bit.
Negative?
Approximately about one percent. I don't have the exact number on me, which is pretty typical for diversified portfolios in 2015. You had domestic equities, which had a small, modest return, specifically, for example, like the S and P 500 was up about one point six percent. But this is a diversified plan. It has mid and small cap exposure in there as well. Those stocks on average were down about four or five percent. International markets in 2015, as measured by the EVA index, was down about five percent for the year. We have a small amount of exposure to emerging markets, and those were down on average about fifteen percent. So it wasn't unusual for diversified plans to actually have a small negative return. And then the reason why we have a diversified portfolio is that, you know, historically, over time, it lowers the volatility of the plan assets, and that's really important because this is a plan that's just not growing in F and I, per se. It's a plan that's distributing to the pensioners. So the last thing you want to see is have a portfolio that's down ten percent and then have to take a distribution probably.
And do you invest in your plan in the gas companies at all? Is there any investment in these gas companies?
Well, there would be some exposure to the energy sector.
Energy sector includes gas companies, gas and oil?
Absolutely, yeah.
And despite the performance over about, over a year now of declining revenues and profits for the gas companies, would you think it might be a good idea to divest from them completely?
No, no. I mean, energy is ten percent of the S and P 500, so you'd be making a tremendous bet on doing that. Now, underweight relative to ten percent, we think that makes sense, but we would not be devoid of a major asset class.
And then when you said there was, you're up to twenty-three point two million in assets, and it was twelve point two, and what year was it twelve point two? I missed that one.
That would have been October 30th, 2012.
So from 2012, it's increased by, I guess, about double?
Give or take.
Give or take in assets. And are you invested, when you say energy sector, are you invested in any kind of alternative energies, like wind and solar, hydro power?
Yeah, they're, I mean, again, it's a very diversified portfolio, so there would be some exposure to there. Absolutely.
Any other questions? All favor?
Aye.
So Karen, any public comment to the retirement board?
Make a motion to close the retirement board?
I second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold to close the retirement board. All favor?
Aye.
So closed at 10:01. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.